This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees was previously called to order. The presence of a quorum had been established. The meeting was duly called and notice of the meeting has been posted at the time in manner required. We are returning from executive session. Before we do any business, we will begin the public portion of this meeting with prayer and pledge of allegiance. And this month is Mr. Bergfeld's turn.
You can please stand.
Let us pray. Father, we come tonight to thank you for watching over the children and the teachers of TISD this school year. We thank you for allowing us to live in a country that provides free education to all children. We thank you for all of the people who give selflessly to the children of our great city. Lord, we ask for your wisdom and guidance as we direct this district, and may all of our work be to your glory. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Executive session, we have action to consider for item B.
I move that we approve the termination of Michelle Jackson for job abandonment for the 2017-2018 school year.
Do you have a second for that?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item C, a parental complaint under Texas Education Code Chapter 26 and District Policy FNG. Do you have a motion?
Reverend Hager, I'd like to make a motion to uphold the administration at level two.
Thank you, Mr. Bergfeld. Do you have a second for that?
Second.
Mr. Hardy, that's a sufficient... Okay, great. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you have approval of minutes? I'll submit it. Any discussion? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes for September the 7th and September the 18th, 2017.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, special recognitions.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Crawford, tonight we honor student admissions for the 2017 school year. The day until October are Jamison Kegler, a 5th grade student at Pete Elementary School, and Tyra Young, an 11th grade student at Early College High School. Congratulations to these students for their hard work and dedication, and at this time, please join me in watching a brief video about their outstanding accomplishments.
Tyler ISD would like to recognize the efforts of our Two District Students of the Month. These students are selected based on six criteria: academic performance, effort, character, behavior, citizenship, and attendance. We would like to recognize Jamison Kegler, a 5th grade student at Pete Elementary, as our Elementary Student of the Month. Jamison understands what it means to be a good student.
Being respectful to your teacher, being a good student means coming on time, caring about your schoolwork, getting it done, showing that you want to be here, and showing that you want to accomplish your goals to be the best student you can be.
Jamison says his favorite class is science, and he knows what he wants to be when he grows up.
I want to be a dentist. I want to go to Duke. I'm majoring in pre-med.
Jamison is a special young man who wants to encourage other students to stay focused and be successful, and he even wrote a book to help them do just that.
It's called "The Time Is Now, The Grind Is Real." I wrote this book to guide kids in the way that they need to be guided, like if they're off track and need to get their head right. Mentally, I put this book out there for them so that they can accomplish their goals, get on track, stay where they need to be, like keep their head on.
Our Secondary Student of the Month is Tyra Young, an 11th grade student at the Early College High School. She understands there's something unique to being a student at the Early College.
It has taught me a lot because the school is very challenging, but how my dad says, if everyone could have an associate's... if getting an associate's degree was very easy, everybody would have it. And so, it truly taught me about time management and how to study and who to surround myself with. And so, I think it's really prepared me for whatever I get into the future.
Tyra is very focused on her schoolwork. She has earned 18 college hours and is currently taking 12 college hours this fall. This young lady is a member of the prestigious National Collegiate Honor Society, Phi Theta Kappa, and has a solid plan for her future.
After Early College, I'm hoping to get acceptance at UT Tyler because I want to be a trauma nurse, and so I want to be able to finish all of my nursing credits that I can do at TJC right now. And then, once I get to UT Tyler, I can join their nursing program. I'm still deciding to get my BSN or ADN, so...
Tyra truly appreciates the education she is receiving and has advice for other students that are considering enrolling at the Early College High School.
The advice that I would give to someone coming into ECHS is just to stay focused on your schoolwork because it's... it can pile up on you a lot, and if you put your mind like, "Ooh, I want to watch this show this night," you're going to fall behind. So, whenever your teacher assigns, do it then. Stay after school for tutorials and just take advantage of this program that we have because we're very lucky to have it. And so, thank you, Ms. Frazier, for creating the school program because this is definitely going to help us, and getting it for free. And then, once you actually go to college, the hours that you need will be very minimum, and you could start your career at a very young age. So, thank you to all the teachers at ECHS.
Congratulations to these students for their hard work, dedication, and leadership in the classroom. Their efforts are being recognized through TISD TV and sponsorship by Christus Trinity Mother Francis Health System.
Board members, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Jamison Kegler, our Elementary Student of the Month. Next, I'd like to ask you to join me in congratulating Robert E. Lee High School student Cody Olson for being named the 2018 National Merit semifinalist by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Congratulations, Cody. We're so proud of you. We're very proud to announce Ms. Nikitha Carter, a Computer Applications teacher at Texas Governor Greg Abbott has proclaimed October 2017 as Principal's Month in Texas. In honor of our principals, the State of Texas is recognizing elementary and secondary school administrators. A principal must assume many roles on and off the campus, including leader, evaluator, instructor, diplomat, communicator, friend, neighbor, and many more. Principals balance these roles and many tasks daily in order to make sure our students excel in learning. We appreciate your leadership, principals, and thank you for being on the Tyler ISD home team. Tonight, we are proud to honor you, and as I call your name, if you would please come forward. Chris Blake, Three Lakes Middle School. Claude Moore... Claude Lane Moore, Middle School, excuse me. I know that's never happened before. Gretchen Naby is the principal at Clarkston. She's actually out at a conference tonight, so her assistant principal, Miss Sandra Fillmore, is here in her presence. Steven Young Orr Elementary School. Chanel Howard Beazey John Tyler High School. And straight from the Robert E. Lee High School Homecoming Parade, we have Dr. Dan Dell Frazier Early College High School. Steve Lynn's Career and Technology Center. Congratulations to all of our honorees. Let's give them another round of applause. And that concludes our recognitions. Thank you, board members.
Item A, it's under our Goal 1.2 MAP Beginning of Year Results. Dr. Crawford?
Reverend Hager, pleased to invite to the table Dr. Hansen, Kristy Hansen, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, James Kuratin, Director of Data Analysis and all things assessment and things like that. You know, as we've now approached our 12th month into Lone Star Governance and Continuous Improvement, having this as the... at the forefront of our agenda, excited about bringing you another round of the measurement of academic progress. As you know, what, three years ago now, we brought on this product from NWEA. That's a nationally-normed assessment to where we actually assess our kids above and beyond what the state requires us to do. So, this is outside the STAR test. This is outside our normal cycle benchmarking, or what's the cool word that y'all use now for assessment? Cycle assessment?
Oh, the short cycle.
Short cycle assessment. So, in saying that, it sure does give us a good indication of a beginning-of-the-year, middle-of-the-year, end-of-the-year assessment for our students that's statistically relevant as far as where we're going. So, I'm going to turn it over to them so they can give you all the in-depth presentation on this Goal 1.2.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford, Reverend Hager, and the board. Dr. Kuratin and I are here tonight to review the Beginning of the Year MAP data, and we're going to start with the MAP K-3 reading scores, especially because that aligns with our Lone Star Governance Goal 1. Then, we'll take a look at the K-8 Math and Reading, the rest of the scores after that.
Okay, thank you, like Dr. Hansen said, for allowing us to be here and present this data for our students to see where we are at the beginning of the year. If we look at how we performed this year on the MAP system for K through 3rd grade, so last year, we started out with about 37% of our students in K through 3rd grade. Thirty-seven percent of those students came in on grade level. This year, on average, we're at about 36%, so we're at a similar level compared to last year. When you look at the breakdown by grade, you can see that a lot of the students that are not on grade level are actually in kindergarten this year. So, these are new students, students we haven't had in TISD. If you look at the students that have been here, or at least the higher grades where we presumably had those students, you'll see we don't see as big of a drop. So, we do see our students in kindergarten coming in a little bit lower this year, but across the board, above that, we tended to stay pretty similar. We did see a big jump in 1st grade this year. So, our goal, just as a reminder, by the end of this year is about 56% of our students to be on grade level, and we're beginning the year with about 36%. So, we've got a... we've got a spread to make up. If we look at cohorts, the reading cohort, so this is, just to kind of orient you, the... in that bar chart, so you only see 1st, 2nd, and 3rd grade here, but the first... if you look at just the 1st grade bars, the 1st grade bars, you'll see that the blue bar represents students this year, and the gray bar represents the same group of students last year in kindergarten. So, the gray bar is where they were last year, and then the blue bar for any of those grades is where are those same exact students this year. So, if we look at 1st grade, what that means is we had 44% of that group come in on grade level last year. If we look at it this year, we have 41% of them come into 1st grade. If we move to 2nd grade, you'll see that 35% of our 2nd graders this year came in on grade level. And if we take a look at those last year, those 1st graders, they would have been about 33%. So, essentially, just to kind of summarize what we're seeing here, in 1st grade, we saw that about 3% fewer of our students are on grade level this year compared to the beginning of last year, but in 2nd and 3rd grade, we see a bump. So, now, we're seeing a 2% gain in 2nd grade in terms of the number of students that are ready, and then a 5% gain in 3rd grade. So, we're actually seeing some contrasting patterns here that I think Dr. Hansen wants to talk about.
So, this really is your instructional measure here, and this really helps you know where we've gone with the... these are just TISD students that we had last year, so it really helps you track the students that we've instructed. As you can tell, as we get closer to the tested grades, we get a higher bump with students. Now, there could be a lot of reasons for that. One of the things that's important to note is that developmentally, students learn to read between the ages of 5 and 9. That's completely developmentally appropriate, so as they get closer to the age 9, then obviously you have more kids that are learning to read and on grade level. Because of state testing, we really kind of have to force kids to read a little earlier, so we needed to ramp that curriculum up, which of course, you know that we've done that. It also takes a few years to fill in skill gaps. So, as you saw, this year, we have more kids coming in that are below grade level, and that's not always something you can make up in a year. Sometimes, it takes two or three years to make up skill gaps, so that stands to reason as well, that as kids get closer to 3rd and 4th grade, you're able to fill in those skill gaps if you've had them for several years. But quite frankly, we know instructionally that there's a lot of work to do in the curriculum. So, that's the impetus, as you know, for why we revamped that pre-K through 3 early literacy curriculum, and then you'll see a similar trend in math when we get to that.
Okay, if we now look at K through 8 and how they all performed compared to last year, so this chart just shows you the average starting RIT, so the average starting MAP score. year, so this chart just shows you the average starting RIT, so the average starting MAP score, I'm sorry, this shows you the percent are at or above grade level. So this is what percent of our students are coming in at or above grade level. This is not cohorts. So this is all of the students regardless of whether TISD had them last year or not. This is just where we are to begin the year. And so you can see, as you move into the later grades, in general, like 3rd, 4th, and 6th, we see that we've got fewer students on grade level this year. 7th and 8th, we actually saw a little bit of a bump. The red line indicates just the average for the district, so this year. But this is, again, as I said, this includes all students regardless of what district they attended last year. If we take this and we actually look at it by campus to see how our campuses are doing, this scatterplot shows you essentially where they're falling. So on the x-axis, we can see the percent of students that are at or above grade level last year. That's the beginning of the year last year. The y-axis, that's the percent of students that are at or above grade level this year. And that diagonal line indicates a one-to-one relationship. So any campuses that are above that line are our campuses that are actually having, they have more students on grade level this year compared to last year. And if they fall below that, we have fewer students on grade level this year compared to last year. So we want to see everybody above the line ideally. But what you can see is that we don't see any big spreads. So we don't see any campuses right away that are just, that were high last year and they're falling down, or any that were real low and that made a big jump. So we're kind of status quo compared to where we started the year last year, which is consistent with what we showed you for K through 3rd grade. And then for this one, this is gonna be our cohorts.
Right. Again, this is your instructional slide. So these are the students that we have had, and that 1st grade line tells you the students where they were last year in kindergarten and where they are this year in 1st grade. So as we progress on to the tested grades, you can see that the students obviously are, more students are on grade level. Now, the goal is to build that foundation so that we have more students on grade level earlier, so we're not having to catch kids up as much. And that's a trend you saw last year, and that trend has repeated itself this year. So we're hoping that we can really improve that next year, or that we can see some big jumps given that they have a new curriculum this year.
Hey, just a second. Just to clarify, the grade, let's take 2nd grade last year, that's their starting, or is that where they ended?
That's where they started in 1st grade.
Okay.
And that's where they ended, that's where they started in 1st grade and started in 2nd grade. So actually, where we ended as a district last year, we only saw a 2% decline from where we started this year, beginning of the year. So we're really seeing less of a summer slide, which is encouraging. That means that what we are doing with the kids is sticking. And then, of course, our summer programs, I think, really attribute to that as well.
Okay, if we now move on to look at our MAP math data, it's gonna be presented in a similar manner. So this is gonna be the percent of students that are at or above grade level. Again, this is not cohorts. This is just where our students coming in this year compared to where they were last year. And you can actually see, in our early grades, we see a slightly smaller percentage of students on grade level this year. But as you move about towards 4th grade, 5th grade, you actually start to see little bumps. So in those higher grades, we're having, our STAR-tested grades, we have a larger percent of students starting the year on grade level this year compared to last year, which is a positive trend because that's what we want to see regardless of whether it's a cohort or not a cohort. This chart can be interpreted the same way. It's essentially showing you the percent of students that are at or above grade level in 2017 versus 2018. We would want to see every campus in a perfect world above that line, with your green dots representing your elementary campuses and your blue dots representing your middle schools. But you can kind of see, there's a little bit more of a spread here. You can see, there's one campus that sticks out a little bit in terms of performing last year, a little bit better at the beginning of the year compared to this year. But in general, we're seeing a lot of the same patterns. We're not seeing a huge gap up or down from the beginning of the year last year to this year. So this is what we want to see, you know, in terms of not seeing the decline, but we would like to see an increase, which is what we're working towards now. If we look at the math cohorts, so this is gonna be the same students last year compared to this year, only those students. We can actually see a similar trend to what we saw in reading. So we see that 4th and 5th and 7th grade, 8th grade especially, we see a bump. And the percent of students that are on grade level compared, this year compared to last year, and even in 1st grade, so that will be our kindergarten students that we see making that big jump. And we see a slight decline in 2nd and 3rd grade with a slightly bigger drop in 6th grade.
We saw that big dip in 6th grade reading as well. So that's really something that we're looking at as far as whether that's a transition issue from elementary to middle. But certainly something that we need to look at for our, maybe even for our most fragile students, whether that transition is causing some difficulty there. But for the math, I really wanted to point out that one of the things that does tell us is, instructionally, we're getting the kids ready for the test. So that's the good news. The not-as-good news is, is we really want them to be on grade level regardless of when we're testing them, and making sure that we have fidelity to that curriculum so that they're doing well no matter what grade level they're in. It also shows that we are filling in skill gaps. We can tell from the data that our students come in, not all of them, but we do have a high percentage that come in with a significant skill gap. We're not getting those skill gaps filled in in three years, but we are getting them there eventually. So let's talk about what, you know, what we're gonna do with all of this. Obviously, you know that we've rewritten the curriculum. You know that we've worked in the curriculum. We've done a lot of work related to scaffolding, and that's really a paradigm shift. When you have kids that have skill gaps, one of the things that happens is sometimes we end up teaching lower-level standards in order to get them caught up. But we're really working with principals, master teachers, and teachers to help teachers teach on grade level, and we're building the scaffolding in inside the curriculum so that we're not slowing down the pacing. One of the things that happens when you have kids with skill gaps is sometimes you just slow down so much that they end up with more skill gaps. So we're working really hard to scaffold in, in the curriculum, so that we can teach on grade level or above grade level, and then catch the kids up through the scaffolding activities. That's a really important paradigm shift. And then, it's really important to know that with the MAP scores, we are setting goals for students and teachers, and really looking at those MAP tests as accountability measures for getting a year's worth of growth out of every student. So what we, what our data genius has told us over here is that if we set interim growth measures for students and we meet those growth measures, even if they're small for every student, the student has an 84% chance of passing their 3rd grade STAR test. So let me say that again. So if we set interim small growth measures for every student, and the student meets those interim growth measures, and the student has an 84% chance of passing the 3rd grade STAR test. And the data tells us that if a student passes the 3rd grade STAR test, they have a high likelihood of passing the rest of them throughout their educational career. So the goal is to get that 3rd grade student to be successful, as you know, because you're the one that made the goal of getting them on grade level. So we're really working to help build that strong foundation in the early grade levels and have every student and every teacher accountable for growth.
Any questions?
Yes. Now, Dr. Hansen, I know you knew I was gonna say something. So let's tackle this very quickly. I'm glad to hear you say that you are having vertical alignment, because it's most important that teachers understand up and down what's expected of those students per grade level. And my concern is that a child is reading by 1st grade because they're learning those basic words. A child learns quite a bit at the age between 0.4, 0.5. So I would hope that our home is working with us, the home and the school are both partnering to make sure that by 1st grade, that these students are reading on grade level. Because if they get to 3rd grade, we have a very difficult task ahead of us for these boys and girls to be on grade level. I also am concerned, I will say, that we're seeing some declines, but you promised us you were gonna work on that, so...
We're working on it.
We're hoping the schools will work with you so we can see an increase at those levels. I do know that as we progress in grades, the concepts get more difficult. And if they don't have the foundation they need in 3rd grade to master 4th grade, then we have a problem. And God forbid what happens by the time they get to the middle school level. And I know we keep putting it on middle school, middle school, but we, the middle school students, they have to come from elementary on grade level and ready to master those 6th grade skills.
No question.
And I know it's a difficult task, and we've assumed that task. But I hope we'll do more, as much enrichment as necessary, and I'm sure maybe Dr. Crawford will allude to that or say something about it. But I hope we do all that we can to get these students on grade level. Can you tell if the kindergarteners, have you looked at ethnicity and have you also looked at mobility?
Right. So the kindergartners, we don't see any difference between the students who are not, I can, not mobility and ethnicity poverty. That makes a difference as far as whether, where the students come in. So the poverty level is certainly a distinction for us related to skill gaps. Right now, we're not seeing any difference in the students who participate in daycares, Head Start, or don't do anything.
Oh, really?
In their MAP scores. We do see a little bump in the students who participate in the Tyler ISD pre-K programs. They have a little higher coming in, their beginning-of-the-year scores are a little better.
So is the curriculum, Dr. Hansen, is it that different between our Head Start program and our Tyler ISD pre-K program?
It's not this year.
Oh, good.
So this year, we, the feds really do tie our hands related to what we can do, related to curriculum and Head Start. So they, it's a requirement that we have a BOT program in Head Start. We're not allowed to use the Tyler ISD curriculum per se. So what we're doing is we're taking the BOT program and integrating our curriculum, which we of course think is better.
Right.
Into the BOT curriculum because the feds won't let us use our curriculum.
You know, it's kind of interesting. One year when I was a principal, they came, Dr. Crawford, to evaluate our program. They noticed our Head Start children were learning the same word for the week as all the other kids. And they told me that was wrong. And I have an issue when the government expects our children to be at a certain level, because we'd like for them to be higher, but we can't challenge them like we would like to. That's very interesting.
I will say Ms. Miles is doing a great job with really working with us to try to, you know, make it work as much as possible within the limitations that she's been given from Head Start.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you are strengthening our curriculum. And I hope that in the future, we'll see some greater results.
Other questions?
So since a lot of this data is from the beginning, like in the cohort data, the beginning of the year last year and the beginning of the year this year.
Correct.
Refresh my memory on the data, on average, of the beginning of last year to the end of last year, a lot of our K through 3 cohorts, was, you know, their market improvement? I'm trying to remember from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, where we were at.
Right. So last year, we, overall, as a district, the increase doesn't look as big.
Right.
We ended it, we started at 38% or 36%? 36%. And we ended at 42%. And our goal was 49%. So we were shy. But what happened last year was we had a huge difference in campuses. So we had big, big growth in some campuses, kind of middle, no growth in some, and then we had big dips in other campuses that really makes that district data look a little off. But if you just look at the number, it was 36 to 42.
Okay. But that's using a different end-of-year standard than beginning-of-year standard, right? So if we maintain the same percentage, that meant that on average, we made a year's worth of growth. If we improved the percentage, it meant we meant more? Is that correct, or is that...
Would know, in this particular number, I know what you're talking about because last year, we did some, a different standard like that. But in this particular one, we're talking about kids who were at grade level.
Okay.
Just the raw percentage of kids who were at grade level. So we really do expect to have more kids at grade level at the end of the year. That would be the expectation. And certainly, getting those five big components of reading into the lesson every single day, strong phonemic awareness, strong phonics, strong vocabulary, strong fluency, every single day, non-negotiable, pre-K through 3. I mean, we, I can't imagine or anticipate anything but better outcomes with that kind of structured program.
So when you talked about redoing the reading, the literacy curriculum, you were going to stay ahead of the teachers as they began implementing it. Can you give us an update on how, on where you are, how far ahead you are, if you are ahead of them?
We're ahead of them, Reverend Hager. No, actually, we just posted the third six weeks, we posted the third six weeks curriculum last week. And on November 4th, we'll post, November 5th, we'll post the fourth six weeks. We'll be ready for the new semester. The teacher experts were here all last week getting ready for the fourth six weeks. We're almost ready. We're actually in the editing stages. So we are staying, we're staying ahead of them, and then we get those posted, and then we have the short-cycle assessments. And that's something I didn't talk about, that Dr. Crawford alluded to earlier, is 1st grade through 8th grade, well, 1st grade through 12th, actually, students are taking short-cycle assessments so that we have regular progress monitoring, which is different than last year. We just did a nine-week from the district level and two benchmarks. And now we're doing three-to-four-week short-cycle assessments, 15-minute assessments, so that we can just see where the kids are, but also where the teachers are in their pacing, so that we can go in and support if they're getting behind.
Reverend Mason, you asked a question about engaging parents in the community. And I did my radio spot today with KTBB, and we talked about the ATTTP program at Griffin. I can't remember what the acronym stands for, but it's something Mr. Chandler started last year in just one grade level. He is now school-wide, to where they bring the parents in and go over all this data, talk about some of the things they could be doing away from school to be assisting with that. And the great thing about that is there's fidelity amongst our campuses in doing those types of things, because I sat in one today on my own child at Jack today. So those things, those actions of fidelity are what's gonna get us over the hump.
That's true.
When we operate in these little bitty silos and these independent schools, instead of taking our best practices and putting them at each school, I commend Mr. Chandler for not just thinking that he can just do it all by himself and actually taking some of the things that have been successful elsewhere and doing it. Vice versa, I did see that at that same school that I went to today for my own parent conference, they're actually doing more student-level data mining.
Goal-setting.
And goal-setting, which had not been occurring there campus-wide. So I commend Ms. Henderson for doing something that is a pretty basic practice that's been seen at places like Bonner and Griffin, who have had tremendous growth, and Ramey, that have had tremendous growth, and that's one of our higher-performing campuses. So I think there's a lot of buy-in to some of the research-based actions to make sure we're having great progress. If we get everybody on board, we're gonna have a pretty good school system.
Well, as a parent of a 2nd grader, I can speak to the level of attention, you know, when it comes to homework on writing and reading, at least coming home from Caldwell Elementary. And I've seen my son, you know, improve, you know, dramatically over the course of the last couple of years, and I anticipate it getting better. And so hopefully it'll all point to achievement of our goal.
So what you're saying, you're raising expectation even more. And if we rise to those expectations, our students' scores and achievement levels will rise.
Absolutely. And I think students owning it as early as the age of 8, I've got one in my house that freaks out about some of her goals. That's... one in my house that freaks out about some of her, her goals, that's, that's an okay thing, teaching those, those practices at an, at an early age. And again, if we're having that on, at every, every school that we have in the school district, I think that we're going to have some, some pretty neat results in long-term. When we just kind of do things on our own and we, and we don't ask for help, and we don't, we don't try to steal from people that have been doing it pretty well, I think that's when we get in trouble. And we just kind of, again, it's that traditional thing of just going through the motions. I think that's another thing you can say about the early, the early cohorts, the K and the, and the first grade, is we're still trying to engrain that culture that we're not going to play school in kindergarten and first grade.
That's right.
And we've been doing that for a while, and it's tough to bust out of there, but we've got some good examples across the district that are really trying to do things differently in those early ed opportunities. And I do, again, I will say about Ms. Miles and Head Start, thank you for, for being creative and trying to figure out how to embed our curriculum with the federal requirements that we have to provide.
She really has worked with us to try to make that work.
One last thing, I'll finish, Mr. President. I do know that, and I've looked at our data, and our school district is majority economically disadvantage. With not having the money to provide activities and opportunities for our children, that means they come to school with not, with less opportunities and a foundation. And I would hope that whatever we can do, and it may, Dr. Crawford and Dr. Hanson, fall back on the community. We have all these community organizations, and I think it's incumbent upon us to accept some responsibility, more responsibility for our children to help the parents in whatever area we can, i.e. being the church, the school, the community, and all the groups. So if I can help you in any way, let me know, because I think that's something we're going to have to look at more. The school cannot do it all. They take this great opportunity, and they rise to the challenge, but I believe it's incumbent upon us and the community to do all that we can as well.
Reverend Mason, I'll, I'll agree with you there. I think three years ago, or over three years ago now, when you had a new student come in, y'all directed me just to take a hard look. Was very concerned about our abilities. I think we've, we've corrected some of that, and we have a staff that's really buying into, to best practices. We've got to figure some, something out for the two and a half months, three, three months we take off in the summer.
Right, right.
And I'm open. I'm looking at, I'm looking at the public right now, I'm looking in the cameras right now to say that we need, we need help in the summers.
Would you all provide the community organizations with the materials that are necessary to work with our students, and maybe even provide some of the training so we could help with those summer months?
Right. I mean, we, we certainly are willing to do that, and that's, that's the model that we've set forth, set forth with Rosadee Summer Camp. You know, we provide the teachers and the materials for the academic piece, and then they provide the fun.
Provide the facilities.
And the facilities, yes.
Mr. Loper.
Right.
And I will say that, you know, I can't say enough about the teacher expert teams, the teachers who are coming up here and working and building that curriculum, and the curriculum staff. You know, they're, they're working all the time to get this going. But we have book bags for every single preschool, preschool student that we send home with a book or two and activities that go with that book, so that they can keep that book all week and do all the activities, and then bring it back, and we'll give them another book. And so we have those book bags for every single preschool student in the district. For the parents to, if they don't know how to ask the questions, or if this is kind of a new thing for them, in Spanish and English, it's, it's available for them.
Dr. Hanson.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just thinking about now, our kindergarten students. At the end of the year, if they have not advanced as far as you want them to advance before going into first grade, what happens to those students?
I mean, obviously, we have to make an individual decision based on the student. So it's a collaborative decision with the parent. If the student is a little bit behind, that's not necessarily a huge concern because as we talked about, it's okay to take a year or so to fill in the gaps. If the student is significantly behind, doesn't have numeracy recognition, letter recognition, some basic letter sounds, then we know that, especially looking at the student's age, it might be okay for the student to stay in kindergarten another year.
Okay.
And we make that collaborative decision with the parent.
With the parent, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Dr. Hanson, with the curriculum rewrite, can you talk about how the three-tiered reading model, how, how the rewrite has impacted, I guess particularly Tier One or Tier Two intervention for kids?
Well, we scaffold those, those tier interventions into the curriculum, not just in our pre-K anymore. We've, we've scaffolded it throughout, the telepass, accommodations, all of that, we've done a better job of scaffolding. So because Tier One and Tier Two happen in the classroom, and they happen within the realm usually of the, of the school day, we have those specific activities or suggested activities scaffolds at the back of the curriculum documents so that it's right there available for the student, I mean, for the teacher. Likewise, with the short cycle assessments, if we find standards that the students across the district didn't do well on, we, we offer those same spiraling skills back into the curriculum the next six weeks with, so that the teacher revisits them over and over through the workshop model, or through small group instruction, or through explicit instruction, maybe have to do another lesson.
Okay.
Operationally speaking, the model we've, we've suggested in a lot of schools or campuses are following is that, is that RICE model that they really bought into, was it two or three years ago?
Yes.
Where they actually have that remediation time built into their day, not just for the struggling learner, but for the advanced learner and different teachers.
Okay.
So in other words, it's not just this thing to say, we're not going to provide intervention services, or we're going to provide intervention services with the same teacher during that same time.
So Tier Two is usually another teacher?
It can be.
Yes.
They usually.
It just depends on.
Group them homogeneously, and then do it according to, like MAP gives you a learning progression, so any student who's struggling with one specific skill, you can just pull that group. And so it's, they make it pretty user-friendly that way.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, so that's item A then is complete. Item B, is that also, did we also address that, measures of academic progress and star correlation? Was that with that last slide?
Yes.
Okay. So we are then on to item C, the Campus Turnaround Implementation Plan for Dogan.
Okay, so C and D are, are related to campuses that are identified improvement required. Just as a reminder, we had eleven of these four years ago, nine, three, and now two. Dogan's is specifically the Campus Turnaround Implementation Plan. What y'all approved as far as the improvement plan goes, along with the campus improvement plans of all of the improvement plans we have in the district, this is a little bit more specific and targeted for their actual strategies to correct some of the deficiencies in that plan.
Okay, so there's no presentation on these plans, this is?
That's correct. This is compliance as suggested slash required from, what's the guy's name at T E A Raleigh? Jaime Escalante. No? Cervantes, I, Cervantes, okay. Someone's saying, why are y'all laughing?
I know that name.
So they laugh at you like they do my praise.
From Mr. Workman. Yeah, I think so.
Okay. So Jaime Cervantes is our new contact. He replaces Angela Foote that we'd had here for, for three years. She actually got promoted. So he asked that we actually put this in front of y'all for approval for both the schools that are, that are on our this year.
Okay. If there's not any questions for item C and D or any discussion, I'll take a motion.
Let me ask the principal if she has any comments she'd like to make. That's Dogan's principal.
Did she say no?
Ma'am?
I think she just shook her head no.
All right, I believe so.
This is an old sales technique called the pregnant pause. If you just go silent long enough, someone will speak.
Good evening, Mr. President, board members, Dr. Crawford. Always nice to see you, but not necessarily sitting in this chair. Hopefully, I won't have to see you next year. I don't have any questions. If you have any for me, we've had some pretty dramatic changes at Dogan. There is a renewed sense of urgency that you can feel and excitement among our staff and, and our students, and we're just excited for what this year is going to bring. So I don't know if you have any specific questions about the changes that we've made, but we definitely have some.
So, so Mr. Bitter's sitting with our school improvement officers assigned over Dogan and other schools. I will talk about some of the additional resources that have been provided there, I guess is probably something. Is, go ahead, you might want to mention those.
So let's start with personnel. I have ten teachers that were hired this year on my campus total, totally. So ten of thirty-four would be new teachers this year, some of them first-year teachers, but they're really excited, provided by the district. I have an assistant, an additional assistant principal specifically over English Language Arts, who was last year an instructional specialist or coach for the district, Ms. Montgomery, and she happens to be sitting here in the back. So I thank her for her support in being here. Also, we've changed our PSP, who is our primary service provider. Dr. Hassel had been the PSP for Dogan for three years and felt we needed just a little extra push to get us over the hump, so we're using Dr. Terry Fowler, who I'm familiar with, and had, she'd been the PSP for John Tyler when I worked there when they were under improvement required status under the old tax era. Of course, I have Mr. Bitter here who's been added to the forefront of our school improvement officers, but they pretty much work as a team, so I get help and support from all of them. As far as the other changes, we now operate, I added a period, so we have an extended day. We start school at eight o'clock, we end at four o'clock. That allows for us to add an intervention period. We wanted to do it, we were kind of thinking at the end of the day, but Mr. Bitter's suggestion that we try to do it before lunch. So we call it our Falcon's Nest period. And in Falcon's Nest, we basically look at data, and everybody is in intervention mode in reading, math, and in eighth grade, they do it for science and social studies. And so we're really excited about having that. Oh, we also have two master teachers, he just reminded me, that we have that are specifically working, they're split math, science, and language arts and social studies. And with the specific demographic of students that we have, we had a consultant that came in with me over the summer that looked at our data, and we targeted a specific number of students. I know you noticed the sixth graders that have the hard transition period, so they're now in the seventh grade, and we're adding a test to them this year because they have to now take writing along with reading and math. And so for, there are thirty-six students out of the hundred and fifty-two that are in there that are on a triple block, a schedule within a schedule. They are in triple block math, and they're in triple block language arts, which means they're getting added support in those areas that they need to hopefully help them be successful and pull them over the hump. What the research says is that the student who did not pass the test cannot be successful if they don't get extensive intervention. And what we found at Dogan is that in years past, the two years that I've been there, it's difficult to get them to be able to stay after school or to come on Saturdays. And so it was imperative that we find time in their school day to provide them the extensive intervention so that, you know, it, the almost is on us and on our teachers that we have there.
Well, I know there's a sense of urgency. I want you to be encouraged. There are a lot of us Falconites who are still in this city and who've been outstanding contributing members of society, so be encouraged. There is a sense of urgency, however, attached to that, be encouraged. And I hope the faculty has bought in as well, because I believe with everybody working together and with this great support that you're seeing you have from Central AD, it can be done. You can do it this year.
Yes, yes, ma'am. They are, they are very excited. We have a presence, it's almost kind of eerie. I've always had a presence on my campus from administration, but now we look, it's normal. It's not like, oh, they're here, oh, they're coming, it's welcome.
I understand.
You know, we're glad to see them here. Mr. Bitter's been at the front with me welcoming students in the morning, and so now they're kind of, first it was like, who is this guy? But they're kind of getting to know him now. Dr. Crawford's been over a couple of times. So like I said, it's not, you know.
Positive support.
Positive support. Nobody coming in, ah-ha, or, you know, making you feel intimidated. Everybody feels like we have some, some people that have our back that want to see us succeed, and that's an awesome thing to have.
One other resource that, that she may not appreciate, because we, we have this conversation with all of our principals, is we go through staffing every spring, and we staff by formula, and Dogan is actually staffed above formula. So while we may hear some screaming and hollering from some of your peers because we, they want an extra teacher, so we, we don't get that too much from Dogan because we, we've really dedicated a little bit more above formula for them than, as, as we've been trying to recover this. And, you know, Ms. Holmes in her third year, and I'm going to be honest with you, that was a, a pretty daunting task.
That's right.
To, for, for what she took over three years ago. So made great progress the first year, and then we stood there last year, didn't go that far backwards, it's pretty stagnant, but going to be, we're going to be, we were level, so we're going to wind up having a good year this year. So we've heard you, Reverend Mason, and they've got the resources to make it happen.
There are a lot of folks pulling for you, no doubt about that.
And we feel it, and we appreciate it, and, and thank you as always for what you do.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll take a motion for C and D together.
Move we approve items C and D.
Thank you, Mr. Washman. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. He knows, motion carries. Now come to the thirty-minute public participation portion of our meeting. We have two people signed up for tonight, so you gentlemen get your full five minutes instead of being rationed down. First on the list is Mr. Nick Pacina. Second on the list is Mr. Michael Tolbert.
Come on up, man.
Yeah, right here.
Hello, my name is Michael Tolbert. I'm a parent of a T I S D student. First, I'd like to comment on the presentation about early elementary education results. I was on the Board of Directors for Tyler Day Nursery. They are the oldest nonprofit daycare in the state of Texas. In about 2009, 2010, they did some research to find out how their students did once they got to kindergarten and, and beyond compared to other students that hadn't received actual educational instruction in daycare. And their results showed that it made a difference. So I would encourage someone from the district to reach out to them and perhaps discuss their results, and maybe collaborate with them to go beyond that, to find out how big of an impact early education or Head Start can impact the student's success. So that is my first topic. Secondly, I'd like to thank you all for your comments at the previous meeting regarding the name change for Robert E. Lee High School. You know, the comments that you made were, are as important as the actual vote that you made, sharing with the public why you have reached your conclusions or why you're at the position that you are. It was mentioned that there was concern about the apathy regarding topics in general within the school district. Well, I can tell you, I've been pulling my hair out about apathy, you know, in general. In the last... In the last election in District Three, which was in 2010 when there was a competitive election, out of 10,000 voters in that district, approximately 120 people voted in selecting the TISD board member for that district, which I think is appalling, I mean, that says that there is apathy about education in our community, so. First, I want to say, Mr. Burfield appreciates your history and sharing your experience with your research paper on Confederate history. I read an article recently that in, I think it was maybe San Antonio, that there was a school there named Robert E. Lee, and they made the decision to change the name to Legacy of Educational Excellence. And I would discourage this board from taking that route. If you're familiar with the Three-Fifth Solution, that's basically what that's doing, you know, I like the story of King Solomon, where there was a decision to be made and he didn't split the baby, you know, he made a decision about what was right and what was wrong and chose between those two. There are some in that past meeting that expressed the belief that, you know, it's not an urgent enough issue to do anything, so there was a decision that we do nothing or wait. To that question, I would read an excerpt from Dr. Martin Luther King's speech entitled, "Why We Can't Wait." "Time itself is neutral, it can be used either destructively or constructively. More and more I feel that people of ill will have used time much more effectively than people of goodwill. We will have to repent in this generation not merely for the hateful words and actions of the bad people, but for the appalling silence of the good people. Human progress never rolls in on the wheels of inevitability. It comes through the tireless efforts of men and women willing to be coworkers with God, and without this hard work, time itself becomes an ally of the forces of social stagnation. We must use time creatively in the knowledge that time is always ripe to do the right thing." So please bear that in mind. Mr. Reverend Hager, I'd like to thank you for your research and your integrity and thoughtful comments. Reverend Mason, I'd like to thank you for your personal perspective on the topic. Since that meeting, I've gotten a sense that the fierce urgency of now has faded, and I hope you all know that that is not the case, it is still as important an issue as ever. And for those who say it doesn't matter, I have a copy, and I talked to a couple of you about some recommended reading, and one of the speeches was Vice President Alexander Stevens' cornerstone speech. And I would ask if, you know, anybody is familiar with that or had a chance to read that, if not, I can read an excerpt from it. And I think it's necessary because if someone doesn't understand why this is important, I think his words, it makes me cringe to read them, but I think it helps to understand why it's important. "Our new government," he said, "is founded upon exactly the opposite ideas. Its foundations are laid, its cornerstones rest upon the great truth that the Negro is not equal to the white man, that slavery, subordination to the superior race is his natural and normal condition," to which he got applause.
10 seconds? 10 seconds?
Okay. So essentially, I'll just skip to the end, they were attempting to make things equal, and this is his final statement, "which were not made equal by the Creator." So those are the principles upon which the Confederacy was founded, and those are not the principles or the values that we want to perpetuate with our children. Thank you.
Do you want to ask a question about this? There was no presentation.
There wasn't?
Yeah. Moving to Item 11, Business Legal Finance Consent Agenda. We'll pull Item B. Are there any questions or discussions on A and C through G? Hearing none, we'd accept a motion for Items A and C through G.
A move we approve Items A through G with the exception of B.
Thank you, Mr. Washman. Do I have a second? We're slowing down here.
One second.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Nation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B.
According to board policy, we approve all donations of $5,000 or more, so we've pulled two tonight, $5,000 from Hall Buick GMC to the Tyler ISD Communications Department, $5,000 from the Jack Elementary, excuse me, Dr. Bryan C. Jack Elementary PTA to Jack Elementary for their use. Certainly appreciate our community in doing that, especially the PTAs that we have out there, we have one of the better Council of PTAs that I've ever seen. Outstanding group of people that give up their time selflessly and excited that they're to help our students and our teachers.
They even attend board meetings, too, and stay after student recognition.
The Tyler Council of PTA's president is in attendance still.
Still.
Ms. Parnell with Hall Buick GMC, what are some of the things that they support us with?
Our employee service events will be coming out October the 30th.
So Employee Service Event, October the 30th, reception?
Reception at CTC.
At CTC. So I hope that y'all can attend those, that's where you show up and you've had...
10 years of service.
10 fifths, in increments of five. Gina, I think you're up, aren't you, this time? So that's always a great celebration, we've kind of done a game show atmosphere the last three years, and we had, the chief game show officer has retired since, put all that together.
Oh, yeah.
So we're kind of throttling back a little bit, the great thing about that event is they do get a choice in a retirement, or not a retirement, but an actual service prize, I guess, and then of course we have our retirement reception later in the spring, so it's a pretty neat deal. Thanks for Hall Buick GMC for being one of our premier sponsors of Tyler ISD.
Okay, accept a motion to approve the gifts.
I move we approve the gifts, Mr. President.
Thank you, Reverend Mason, second. Is that Mr. Burfield, or no, Mr. Martinez, okay, thank you very much. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 12, Curriculum Instruction Consent Agenda. If there are no items to be pulled, open for discussion or questions, and if not, a motion for approving A, B, and C.
So move.
I'll second.
Second, okay, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us to Item 13, Superintendent and Staff Reports and the Class Size Updates specifically.
Class Size Updates, you have on page 61 of your packet your background information. As y'all are aware, at the June 19, 2017 meeting, we were, the board actually approved that the school district become a District of Innovation. The waiver exemption is no longer required to go to TEA as part of the agreement from the District of Innovation Committee. With the board, we would actually provide that, the report of the class size overages that we have in the district. So in front of you on page 61 is the actual chart, we have two bilingual classrooms that are going to require, that require an overage reporting, and that's a total of two students that have tipped us over that. Monolingual classes are listed below. The total of 26 students are tipping us over the 22 to 1 ratio there, and of course, whenever we do have that, we actually afford a, an additional teacher's aide in that classroom to provide assistance instead of moving students four weeks into the school year to another campus. That does happen in other school districts, so that are suburban, mid-urban, or urban in nature, you actually see students that have actually spent time at a campus for an entire month being shipped across town to actually balance out the class sizes. So that is a strategy we're not willing to go forward, not to mention the fact that these are usually late arrivals, that while we went through that staffing plan in the spring, we were on target, and then we had a little bit of an enrollment boost or spurt at a campus, for instance Dixie, had three students more in second grade than were budgeted for, and then two in fourth grade that caused us to have seven on that, or seven? Math's wrong. Two, I'm sorry, classrooms, and it could be one student per classroom that caused us for that to happen. You know, one thing I think that we are noticing is that we do have some pockets of low enrollment at some of our campuses. The West Side campuses, as predicted by your demographer, two springs ago, I think that was two springs, yeah, two springs ago, are growing, and it's not so much, while we were about 100 to 150 or 200 kids above where we enrolled last year, we just have some movement within our district as far as residency goes and where people are living. And so in saying that, I think we're going to have to take a hard look at our tenant zones at the elementary level and see what we can do to create some headroom. We can't continue to go to our public and ask for a bond election and take on more debt just because we have growth in pockets, when we have some opportunities administratively to actually adjust some attendant zones to actually populate some of our schools. Dixie and Jack are two of the ones that are on the West Side that are, as far as the elementary school goes, that are concerning to administration, and that's what's causing some of this right here as well. So we'll, we'll take a hard look at that, we're already working on a lot of that right now, and we'll bring up a proposal to y'all here in the future.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Crawford on this issue? Okay. Future business, item 14.
Future business, we get to do something fun for once here on October 26, we have groundbreakings for both high schools. John Tyler will actually be first at 9:00 AM in the morning, is that correct, Don?
Yes.
9:00 AM? And then at Robert E. Lee High School, what time is that?
11:00.
11:00, so that'll be fun. We've got students, we've got the band, I think, is lined up to do some pomp and circumstance for us, we'll have students there to take pictures with, we want to make sure that the seniors get a chance to take, to put the spade in the ground, take some memory pictures for them since, bless their hearts, I guess we could say that about the juniors too. They've gone through both of those campuses without being refurbished, but we want to make sure we celebrate them for what they're doing. So we'll see everyone there on October 26, I think those invites have gone out, of course the public is invited as well. November 7, Board Workshop, team required, team of eight training, if y'all are interested in watching that, fun stuff as far as board service goes. And then November 13 is our regular meeting, moved up a week early because we do have the Thanksgiving break, that we are committed to having an entire week of, we didn't get that when we were students, man, must be nice.
Dr. Crawford, could you comment on the exciting topic of our Team of Eight Training? Just so the house will be packed.
Board operating procedures and Lone Star Governance Board Constraints and Superintendent Constraints, so for those of y'all that are in the audience tonight that are surveying the Lone Star Governance stuff, I see a former high school principal and a former mid-urban superintendent out there, they're here watching that, so that'll be fun.
We'll be constrained in our seat.
We will be constrained. That's all I have.
Okay, that concludes the items on our agenda, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, and thank you. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or nay? We are adjourned, thank you very much.